All right, it is now six o'clock. We're following my public committee committee select board through orders. There we will take the last page.
Take this roll call vote. Mr. Howell, Mr. Howard.
She is on vacation.
She is, she's on vacation. Ms. Escobedo, is that you on?
Yeah, I'm here. I'm here.
Escobedo, Mr. Zacharman, here. Mr. Dane.
Aye.
Here, Mary Hartman, here. So we have a quorum.
All right, let's proceed with the public comments. Have anybody who would like to make a public comment? Either in the room or online?
You have our hand up.
Here, oh, I see there is a and up on the screen.
Cynthia Katz. Cynthia Katz.
Hi. Um, hi. Cynthia Katz, 20 Conan Street. I just have a question, not a comment yet. Um, I got communication from Carrie, uh, but I didn't see it on the agenda that you're going to be discussing payment in lieu of taxes tonight, which is why I'm on the meeting. I'm just, um, wondering if that's true still.
Well, it is on the agenda under the item number nine, which is the select board's temp. Why, anyway, the item in which we, um, are responding to the, um, Finance Committee request letter, um, uh, to the, to the board.
Okay.
So why will be, I will be, one of the issues that was raised in the FinCom letter is the, uh, possibility of adopting a pilot program. So that's where it will come up.
Okay, and will I have an opportunity to ask questions or make comment during that time?
Um, well, I don't know if we're going to take any action on it. So if you have any comments on it, why don't you make them during the comments period or while we have you on?
This comment period. Okay.
Yes, the one you're commenting.
Great. Um, okay. I will then. Um, so the first time I ever heard about payment in lieu of taxes was at a town meeting, probably about 10 years ago. Um, and did a little research on it. And then about a year ago, um, and, and it's come up at other town meetings also. Um, and so about a year ago, I met with, uh, the town manager to talk about why Concord wasn't pursuing that. And I then sent a letter, a follow-up letter to the Finance Committee and the Director of Finance. And I believe I copied the select board. Um, and then I recently followed up on that and, um, a couple of weeks ago, um, hopefully you got my emails. And, uh, Carrie emailed me and said that it was going to be on tonight's agenda. So I think that I know many other, uh, communities in Matt, in, uh, Massachusetts do collect payment in lieu of taxes. And I hope that Concord, given, um, given all the debt service we have and all the other things and the pressures on, the pressures on us will start to really actively pursue pilot payment in lieu of taxes. Boston actually recovers from its nonprofits 75% of what it asks for. Um, we have a lot of educational institutions that are nonprofits, hospitals. I mean, nobody, our nonprofit partners are great. But they also, um, that while they're not required to pay taxes or to pay payment in lieu of taxes, um, they do take our resources and especially some of the nonprofits in town that have residential components, not only don't pay taxes on the residential component, but then have a lot of children who go to our schools without any payment, any tax payment toward that. So I would really hope that Concord would get serious about negotiating with our nonprofit partners, some of whom are in a better position to, to pony up, shall we say, um, than others. Um, nobody wants to pay taxes, but it's how we do business. And so I just really hope that between the FinCom and Finance Committee and the Select Board, we can move that forward.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, we will talk about this later. So, um, any other public comment? Okay, then we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Um, second, but I, I have one very minor suggestion on the minutes of October 10th. Um, it's on, uh, page four, the minutes in my liaison report. And it should say that those are, uh, the purple, it should say something like, I recommended these items for future agendas. Yeah, I think it's something like I recorded on them, but these are recommended for items for future agendas. So just to change that. Um, and then other than that, I second the consent agenda.
Will you take a vote? You definitely agree. Um, so move to approve the consent agenda with the change that, um, Mr. Zacharman has asked for, um, Ms. Escobedo.
Um, I also had a similar correction on page four.
Okay. Go ahead.
Um, otherwise I, I approve the consent agenda.
Do you want to tell us what your corrections are on page four? Are we on the same page that, that Terry was talking about?
Yeah, it's on page four, my report. Under my report.
I don't see your report. Okay, I must be on the wrong.
It's page four of the minutes. So it's something like page eight of the packet or something like that.
No, the minutes don't.
The minutes has pages on the bottom right.
Right. So which, is it April? Is it October 10th minutes, Linda?
I'm sorry, don't have them in front of me.
You were at that meeting, so. Okay, help us find where you are.
Excuse me?
Help us find where you are.
She doesn't have it in front of her.
Oh, she didn't. But is this a substantive change or is it a typographical, uh, change? Or, I mean, is it something that can be silently corrected without having to be considered a voting?
Yeah, it's a typographical, I can deal with it separately.
All right, okay, let's proceed then.
Okay, so where was I? Ms. Escobedo, you're going to approve to approve. Uh, are you going to vote to approve the consent agenda, Linda?
Yes.
Ms. Zacharman?
Yes, Mr. Dane.
Aye. And myself, Mary Hartman, aye.
All right, so now we move on to the appointments.
Okay, yes. Move to appoint Dr. Anna Feldweg of 343 Carmel Avenue to the West Hartford Advisory Committee for a term to expire May 31, 2026. Move to appoint Tiffany Absinski of 61 Garfield Road to the Economic Vitality Committee for a term to expire May 31, 2026. Move to appoint John Flaherty of 156 Upland Road to the Financial Audit Advisory Committee as a citizen at large member for a term to expire May 31, 2026. Move to appoint Amy Hoey of 217 Central Street to the Pollinator Health Advisory Committee for an unexpired term to expire on May 31, 2024. Move to appoint Cynthia Rainey of the Concord Regional School Committee to the Financial Advisory, Financial Audit Advisory Committee for the retroactive term of June 1, 2023 to expire May 31, 2024. Stefan? Ms. Escobedo?
Aye.
Ms. Zacharman?
Aye.
Mr. Dane?
Aye.
And myself, Mary Hartman, aye.
Thank you. All right, we move on to the town manager report.
Terrific, I have about 10 extra minutes.
I hope you don't need them.
So thank you and good evening. I'm pleased to announce the appointment of Anthony Ansaldi, who's here in the room, to the position of Chief Financial Officer. You met him at your last meeting because you were involved in the appointment. Uh, he's been here for six business days. This is at least his second committee meeting and he's doing a great job and we're very happy to have him on board. Uh, this morning at our staff meeting, Anthony reported that we have received over 1,500 applications for the residential exemption. Uh, the assessor's office is a bit overwhelmed with, with the volume of applications coming in and questions that they are receiving. So for the next few days, they're going to adjust their hours. They're going to be open to the public tomorrow, 8:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. And then they're going to be closed in the afternoon so they can process everything that, that is coming in. And they're going to do that tomorrow through Wednesday, November 1st. And the reason they need to do that is we have one administrative staff person in the assessor's office. We have, um, two and a half other field people that are in that office and they are also helping. But at the same time, we're also working with the Department of Revenue on certifying new growth and getting ready to prepare for the, um, the setting of the tax rate. So they're, they're just very busy, but we're pleased that we've received so many applications. It's very helpful for people to apply early, uh, because then, then the amount, the numbers we're working with are more firm than estimated. So we appreciate the, the public, uh, doing its part to, to file early. I did want to mention that we had our, finally had our cell tower listening session last week on Thursday. We had a, a very good participation. Uh, we had presentations from our Chief Technology Officer, some testimony from several of the staff, including Lieutenant Goldman, Fire Chief Tom Judge. And we, we had what I thought was, was a really good presentation and, and discussion. Both the town and the schools have surveys live right now on this topic. The school has received about 700 responses already to the survey. The town's received approximately 100. And with respect to respondents' views on a cell tower on the high school property, 80% of those responding to the school survey are favorable. And 89% responding to the town survey are favorable again on having a cell tower on school property. So that, that's good news because if, if you were in attendance or tuned in, you know, in that area of town, high school property is the best site to solve the problem. On Wednesday, October 25th at 6:30 p.m., the EPA is hosting a, an information session on the NMI Starment property. They are going to provide an update on cleanup and, um, and, and talk about that property. They're hoping to have newcomers as well as people who have been following the work and there is some additional information on the EPA website at epa.gov/superfund/nmi. Last week, the Transportation Advisory Committee, in conjunction with staff, held the first public workshop on the comprehensive transportation and mobility study. There were over 100 community members who attended. A lot of good feedback from, from those who attended on, um, on topics, but also on the format of the meeting. A lot of people appreciated that it was an open house, that it was informal, that they could move around at their leisure. And we thank everybody who attended and look forward to continuing working with the community throughout this process. The CPC Committee has reviewed 12 of their 19 applications received for fiscal '25 funding. They have their last night of presentations on November 1st and they'll begin deliberations on November 14th. From our Department of Public Works, um, I wanted to note that the Comm Ave project continues. Final paving is scheduled for yet this construction season and we're looking forward to closing out this project and restoring full access to the roadway and sidewalks. And I think all of the businesses and residents who've been so patient with us throughout this process would like to see that come to a close as well. Uh, we did receive a grant for some intersection improvements at Mean and Walden. Uh, we had hoped that we might be able to kick that, those intersection improvements off, uh, yet this construction season. But we have decided to postpone that until the spring, so there'll be more to come on that. I wanted to provide a brief update on the Jarrow Park project and note that the town engineer, who is our in-house project manager, will be preparing a weekly update and making that available to the public. It will highlight both completed work and tasks to be completed the following week. Progress is being made, though anybody who's monitoring the property on a regular basis might not likely see any, any, uh, significant work because there's no large-scale mobilization associated with the remaining of the work. The remainder of the work falls into two categories, uh, four categories, excuse me. Landscaping, paving, septic system and, and completing the pavilion. These are all being done by, uh, four individual subcontractors. So again, people are not likely to see any large-scale mobilization, but work is being completed. And I think, I think that's it for me. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Yes.
First of all, thank you, Carrie, for postponing the, the intersection work at Mean and Walden. And when, because I know the business community, I think they get something like 70% of their revenues during November and December. So that's a big help. Um, it's unfortunate that I think some kind of procurement, um, slowdowns pushed it off to the fall. So, uh, and I think that's also, um, at play with some of the delays in Jarrow. So anything we can do to streamline the procurement process going forward would be helpful. Um, the other thing I noticed is that, um, the historic commission in your report about the, um, the signs, and I'm hearing a lot from people around about the signs are outdated. When will the select board hear about that?
Do you do that schedule? Yes, it's scheduled for the next meeting.
The next meeting, great. Good, thank you. And then finally, do we know, do we have any idea of, um, how much money the CPC has this year? Because I do know that housing sales have been down and the CPC gets the revenue from surcharges on transactions. Do you have any?
You know, I don't off the top of my head. It's usually around $1.8 million. The, the thing to remember is that we use the prior year, uh, the, the prior year amount from the state. So we'll know probably any day now what, what will be available for the current year. But we're, we're using the prior year estimates. So if, if there's any impact because housing sales slowed down, we potentially have another year before we will feel that.
So F R 25 then is, is okay, even though housing starts have declined?
I, I, yeah, I don't, I don't think we'll see an impact for fiscal '25 funding. But I don't believe that we have provided a firm estimate to a firm estimate, a firm number to, um, to the committee.
Okay.
And we need to get that to them by mid-November.
Great.
Well, there are two, there are two pieces of the CPC money. One is the, um, the surcharge of the, the deed recording, um, which is directly related to the transactions of that year. Right, that, because that goes right onto the tax bill.
That, that comes from the state. That's the piece that comes from the state. Right?
No, there's another piece that, the fund matching. We get then, there's a certain, we raise a certain amount of revenue on, based on the, the surcharge we put on the deed status. But then the percentage, the state reimburses a certain percentage of the funds that we realize from the transactions in the town. Is that right? And that used to be a dollar for dollar at the beginning and it has dwindled down to a much lesser percentage, hasn't it?
That's correct. Because of the number of communities that are participating and the communities that are participating at the full 3%. Um, I, I believe they get a higher percent, a higher percentage.
We know approximately what percentage of reimbursement that we get from the state.
I think last year we got 31.
Yeah, it, it varies, it varies year to year and, and I, I could provide you some information, but I, I don't have that readily available.
But it's something along in that general area of the server.
Well, that was pretty high and down in the twenties.
It's, it's been as low, it's been lower than that too.
Yes. And it's, and this year I think it's even, it's more vulnerable because we haven't had as many real estate transactions to, to generate the transfer fee that provides the matching. So there's a lot of things in play.
Also, it's a matching, it's not a reimbursement. So there, it used to be that however much money we raised, it would be doubled by the state. But now we get the money we raised plus another 17% or 30% or whatever state.
So we can, again, we need to provide a, uh, an up, a revenue update to the CPC committee. We can copy you on that, so you have it.
That'd be great, thank you. That's all.
Anything else?
I have a question on the Rest Edge construction. So it sounds like, um, a lot of people are applying, I think you said 1,500 applications. And, um, what is the approximate number of, um, residential properties in, in town?
Six thousand.
Six thousand? Six thousand, so about 25% of the town applied, something like that. And the deadline to get the credit in January is November 1st, is that right?
Yes.
You have to apply by November 1st. Okay. Okay, good luck to everyone processing. Thank you.
Well, if you missed the November 1st deadline and you don't get it until later, you'll get it right to ramp.
Right.
Right?
Yes, you'll see it on the page.
So it's not like you're not going to get the money.
No, no. But there's still three quarters of people left, a lot of them could have, so that's, that's right.
I think, you know, we're, we're hoping that, that people in homes below the median, we expect that that's where we're receiving the bulk of the applications. And, and that's frankly, that's the most helpful to us right now.
Right. Although people above the median think they don't qualify, but actually everyone qualifies if they've lived there and own the property.
We're, we're dealing with that issue. Um, and I, um, I'll, I'll talk about that in my chairs remarks.
Great. Do you, do you want to just check in with Linda to see if she had any questions? I thought I saw a hand up somewhere, but I think that's Shannon's.
I, I had my hand up just to read you what Stuart Saganor said about, about the CPC monies, but you've gone on, so that's, that's enough. So I'll be quiet.
All right, thank you.
Here's your finish?
I'm finished, yes.
All right. Then, um, I have a number of items on my conference, uh, in my report, more than usual. Um, first item is with regard to the, uh, budget requirements for the 250th anniversary. Uh, Fred Ryan and I both, uh, went to, uh, I was going to say Washington, or it's only Boston, uh, uh, on the 16th and testified live in front of the, um, Tourism Committee, Joint Tourism Committee, um, in order to, um, um, express the need that the town had for, um, uh, funding from the state in order to cover, uh, the, uh, a significant portion of the expenses the town will incur in connection with the 250th anniversary. Um, primarily, uh, the largest demand being for public safety, um, expenses, uh, where the, um, where it appears from the financial, um, information we have that there will not be any substantial additional support from town resources for that, uh, undertaking. Uh, and that, uh, those of us who are thinking about the financing of that celebration, um, we are, we have to assume at this point that, um, the only funds that we will have from the town for this will be the $700,000 that have already been allocated for it. And we will need, I think, probably bare bones, at least another half of the dollars to cover the expenses that are sure to, um, arise. Um, so, um, we were there, Fred and I went and, um, there were about half a dozen people from Lexington have also attended live and in person. And, um, so I think our presentation was well received. Whether it will result in any action as a part of the legislature remains to be seen. This is a follow-up really on the meeting that we had, this, our representatives, Gattalo and Chantile and Senator Barrett, uh, on the, on September 22nd. Um, second item is that we had, uh, we had, um, a large turnout last, uh, at our last meeting from people from Warner's Pond, uh, who were concerned about, uh, the progress that was being made on that project. And, um, happy to announce that the Town Resource Commission will be holding a hearing on that matter on November 8th. Um, on the cell tower, uh, on the, um, on the, uh, on the, uh, meeting that we had on the 19th, which was reported on already. Um, uh, the, um, the discussion was very good and comprehensive. Um, and, um, the, and I, and the points that I made, which is the, the, um, path that I, and, uh, proceeding along was that, um, that we should focus on the opportunity that will provide the most coverage in the least amount of time. That the opportunity, that opportunity is the, uh, tower in the Tricon Church, which is the best location, already permitted as known feasibility and as least opposition. Uh, that we make clear that the, that with regard to coverage against Congress Center, the town does not favor any alternative sites. And that we should bring town resources and centers to bear on the private parties to bring them to agreement and facilitate the project. And finally, we continue to work with the regional school district to find a solution that will be their needs. And, um, so that, I, that, that covers that. And I understand there will be a, um, a report on that meeting in this week's bridge. Uh, on the residential exemption, um, that, um, there was a letter in the bridge, uh, last Friday, uh, by, uh, by a, uh, resident who, uh, who, uh, felt that the, the residential exemption was not, uh, was not equitable. And I, um, responded for that as a letter, which I hope will be published, uh, this week. And I will pass it around here. I have to write it so that it would be, uh, so it will be timely. And so, uh, but what I said in essence was that, um, all town residents who own their own homes will benefit from claiming the exemption because no matter what the value, um, no matter, no matter, uh, because no matter what the value, about 138,000 will be taxed, will, will not be taxed, which is a saving of about $1,800 at a tax rate of $13,000. which is a saving of about a hun- eighteen hundred dollars at a tax rate of thirteen dollars a thousand. That the eligibility is not based on the value of the home. If you own it, live in it, and file an application. And even if as a result of the plan, the total amount of your tax goes up because of the slightly higher tax rate applied to the amount in excess of the extension, it will go up less by about eighteen hundred dollars under the extension. So everybody, at whatever level uh their property is assessed, it will benefit from, the owner will benefit from filing. Um and I then went on to explain why it was that this was equitable. And that it was um that um it was equitable in the same context that a graduated income tax is equitable. Um uh because it was based on the assumption that those who have more are better able to bear the cost of building schools and providing essential services. And that um we see this as one small way in which we can help maintain whatever little economic diversity remains in our town. So um
Yeah, that's a good part of the record? In the packet?
It isn't in the packet, but it can be placed there.
I think.
Um then um uh I so um then um I understand that the planning staff will be providing a um a a a report on the Novo project uh prior to the zoning board of appeals hearing, which I look forward to seeing. And uh that I hope that we will, that we'll have a chance to look at that uh before the hearing of the Board of Appeals.
Sorry, say that again.
Uh the planning staff is going to prepare a report on the Baker Avenue project to advise the zoning board of appeals, as is typically the case with special permit applications. And the the planning board does not have any authority to approve or disapprove, but it is, it is it is our staff that has the knowledge and the experience to be able to um advise the zoning board of appeals on on the um application and to make recommendations on conditions that should be um requested.
That's, that's, that's great. So the select board will get a copy of that?
I mean, I
Great, thank you.
Okay, so then um uh okay, uh the uh there will be a ribbon cutting for the rail trail on the thirty-first. Um the, I met with the town moderator this afternoon on um the question of whether there should be any task force uh to be organized in order to consider improvements of the town meeting process and procedure. And uh she will be in front of us on uh on November sixth to present a um a uh a a draft charge for such a task force.
I'm sorry, task force for what?
For reviewing town meeting process.
Oh, okay.
Okay, because as we recognize, uh uh as it's all it's as a pretty regular, there are people who um have questions about how effective and unfair.
Right, right, right.
And it's something that we uh that we need to address.
Okay.
Okay. Um the housing roundtable is gonna be on the twenty-fourth, five to seven.
October?
And
Is it October twenty-fourth?
It is, yes, it is.
What, tomorrow?
It is Thursday. Wait, is it Thursday? I may have the wrong date. It's it's, it's, I believe it's this Thursday, isn't it not, or is it next?
Well, could you repeat what you said? I heard housing rounding.
Housing rounding.
No.
No, not this
This, this Thursday is the ZBA meeting on the forty B, yes.
And um the, I assume, uh the the uh the reply brief of our juniors in Yesterberg soup was, I think circulated to the board and is is to be filed or was filed today.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Uh and then um I will save, I also have um responses to the um uh request from the Finance Committee on a number of um preferences um and um um preferences of the select board with return regarding to financial priorities. And I will deal with that after uh the town manager deals with the other matter relating to the Finance Committee. I think at the last meeting on the last item of this meeting.
That's right, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Um Henry, a couple of questions, your comments about your, what these items that you've just reported on. So in terms of looking at town meeting, um there's also been some discussion here, here and there about looking at um you know, having another charter review or looking at form of government or whatever. So when we discuss this on November sixth for this uh task force, the town meeting, is that time to bring up?
Yes.
A larger question, okay.
It is, I mean, what I, what I asked Carmen to do was rather than to come to us and just have a wide open discussion, is to come to us with a proposed charge, we could use it as a basis for discussions. But if you have any thoughts about what should be included
Okay.
or excluded, wanted to contact her directly so that
Okay.
What she comes to us with will be at least slightly predigested.
Great. And then my other um
Carrie, may I make a quick comment just to say that this is coming, this is Diane Proctor, fifty-seven Sudbury Road. On two, on Thursday evening, November second at the library and and um Henry nicely and politely, you know, graciously mentioned this a couple of weeks ago at the select board meeting. There's gonna be a uh a meeting at the library on does town meeting work for you? And in which Carmen will be part of that panel as will four Concord citizens. So I would urge anybody who wants to begin to formulate opinions and a discussion to join us there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and the other item is going back to the first thing you reported on the two-fiftieth.
Yeah.
So um I also was at the cell tower listening session uh where you made the introductory speech. And then I left and I went to the uh two-fiftieth meeting. And they did talk that night about possibly submitting a warrant article um for this upcoming town meeting because I think that I heard you say, I might have heard you wrong, but I think you said you're presuming that it won't be looking for more funding?
I'm not saying that they won't be looking for more.
Okay.
Um I'm saying that we, I believe that the prudent course of action is to not assume
Correct.
Not to assume that any more funding will be available. The, the committee is also, of course, organizing uh to solicit um con- uh voluntary contributions.
Right, right.
Um
Perfect.
So at this point, now that I am the chair of this committee, but uh the liaison to that committee, I am having a somewhat more um um a a different role with regard to the committee, which involves uh kind of the the large, looking at the larger picture.
Okay, well, thank you for clarifying that. That's great. Um and I guess they'll be coming in in December.
In December. And I am uh I am dealing with the chair of that committee um about the kind of what is, what are our expectations?
Right, right. Great. Okay, thank you.
All right, so I think that concludes my, my perhaps much too long report. And then we will go on to, well, we have a hearing, don't we? At seven o'clock, we can
We can do that.
Oh, select board liaison reports. Yeah, all right, let's do that.
I'll, I'll start.
Um why don't you start there?
I'll start.
Okay, good. Go ahead.
I'm gonna start. Here I go. Um okay, the ad committee met on there. They've got the language for the warrant article that they're going to bring to town meeting to exempt uh farm stands from the charge on bags. So they're in good shape there. Um uh that's a, it's a, it's a great committee. And most when farmers get together, they mostly complain about the weather. I guess that's the thing. They do a lot, but I enjoy listening to them. Good stuff. You know, I believe no farms, no food. It's a great community. We're lucky to have so many farms in town. And sometimes they're silent and we need to appreciate them. So that was good. Um I went to the Effective Governance Workshop at the library that was hosted. I think, Henry, you something to do with that, and that was great. Um I learned something even more about open meeting law. Um I went to the FinCom meeting the other night and we continued, they continued the discussion of the ominous budget bill and uh which is the consolid, which would be the consolidation of the three operating budgets under one article that would be sponsored by the select board. And I must say, I think it's a promising idea, but the school committee um the first step was to see how the school committee felt about it, and they were generally in favor of it as long as the same percent guideline was issued for all three of the budgeting entities. And when you think about it, it's like, well, some years there are gonna be groups that need more money than the guideline, and some years there are gonna be groups that need less. And what is the process that we're gonna use to negotiate? Um who gets what? And I don't think that's really been thought through. Uh some of the ideas that came out would be, well, that would be negotiated between the town manager and superintendent of the schools. And I think that lacks transparency, so I don't think that's an idea that has um legs. The other idea was it would possibly be um negotiated with the select board and the school committee. And then I kind of wondered, well, what's the role of the finance committee? I'm going forward. So I think it it was, it's a very promising idea, but I think it needs to be thought through some more. And I think the finance committee ended a lengthy discussion without coming to a decision about what they would recommend to the select boards. So that's still impressive.
Yeah, I mean, um one thing that I'm really wondering is uh since the high school is on the basis of assessment.
Exactly.
How
Exactly.
How do you even begin to make that equitable to seem?
Exactly, exactly. You see, exactly, right. Um so we haven't really thought through, well, what would be the process to deal with things like that. Okay, so anyway, that's where that stands. The finance committee is gonna continue to discuss it. They'll make a recommendation. Then it will really be up to us whether we think we're ready to to go ahead with this. Um and then finally today, I met with Megan and Keith Bergman and myself to begin talking about um crafting a uh close community agreement. And our role is to simply advise.
First, for know about what you're talking about.
For the know about project, yes. So we had our first meeting today. I think we got grounded. Megan's gonna collect some more information from the the parties that might want to have um some preferences included in that agreement. So, you know, we got off, we can start.
Okay. So um the Hanscom letter has been signed by all the um towns and submitted to the governor at last, and everyone should have a copy now and um and it be um put on our website somewhere. Um wherever you think is appropriate.
Sure.
And um the, there's a group, I don't know exactly what the name of this group is, but they did a Hanscom forum in Bedford, in the end of September. And I went to that.
Was it Mother's Out Front?
Well, Mothers Out Front is one of the sponsors.
Yeah.
Okay, and they wanna have one, they have December sixth, they booked the Goodwin Goodwin Forum in the library. Uh the other sponsors besides Comfort Mothers Out Front are the Climate Action Committee, uh Sagar Heritage, Stop um Private Jet Expansion, there's many sponsors. They wanna know if the select board will also be one of the co-sponsors. So um I don't think we have to do anything in particular um to be a sponsor, but what what do you think? They would like us to decide yes or no. It's basically a hybrid event. The public is invited. Um they give a short presentation and there's questions and answers about Hanscom.
I think we have to know more about the organization and um what the program is before we decide that we're gonna sponsor it.
Okay. Um right, we can get more information.
When is taking place?
December sixth.
All right, well, we have plenty of time to
What does it mean to sponsor it? What does that mean?
We don't know.
You know, what does it mean to sponsor?
It might mean just that the select board is listed as one of the sponsors and it might mean that one of us is on a panel. If anybody wants to do that.
No, I think we need more information.
Okay. All right.
Even if we don't have, even if it does involve providing funding, we still
No, no, they don't, they're not asking for
But that, yes, but even, even without money, we we do care about what we put our name on.
Right, 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 right. Okay. All right. Okay, um I did attend that um transportation workshop. There were over a hundred people there. It was really excellent. And I also attended the library hundred and fiftieth um anniversary party, which was wonderful. And um the Department of Public Works had a meeting where they went over the capital plan. And we are very, very underfunded in our infrastructure, worse than I had thought. In the coming year, their request for twenty-five, just an engineering, is eight million dollars. Which was pretty amazing. That's, that's a lot. Uh we are way behind Yegol, according to them. So that's an interesting thing to consider. Um I also went to the Bruce Freeman site visit at Junction Park. And um that was a a very emotional meeting. There were two groups. Um people who love the park and people who wanted to be rail trail. And there was no agreement on where the planters should go. If you recall, they came to the select board last year. Remember that? I did. And um I think Marshall was going to try and um design where the planters should go.
That's right.
So then Megan tried to take that um diagram and put out planters. And it was very emotional and there was no agreement. But there, there was a big crowd there, and I talked to a lot of people afterward who felt it was a very positive meeting. Because it was transparent, it was honest, people had a lot of dialogue. Um Megan was very honest in saying, look, there's no easy solution to this. I don't know the answer. So we didn't really solve it, again. Uh and I, I came away feeling that we probably are gonna need a long-term solution to this, that the short-term solution maybe we'll muddle through, but ultimately, we might need a long-term solution. Anyway, that includes my liaison.
Thank you. Linda? Is Linda, Linda, you have any?
I have no update at this time. I have no update at this time.
At the time, all right. Well, that's where we are now at this time. Any other reports? Okay, I've pretty much covered mine. And uh we have a um why don't we skip then to the the item number eight? And take care of authorizing the town manager to act on behalf of the town for the waste water asset management grant. Um while we're waiting for the seven o'clock uh tide to come for the public hearing.
I, I can address that. Um our Water and Sewer Superintendent Jeff Murawski is putting this request forward. Unfortunately, he uh due to extenuating circumstances, was not able to be here in person this evening. So I let him know that I would take this up on his behalf. Um there is a memo in the packet. It's, it's fairly self-explanatory. The town has an opportunity to receive some grant funding for an asset management system. This would be for software, both for software and for data gathering. We would be working with third-party. Uh, the grant is a 60% grant in the amount of almost a hundred and eight thousand dollars. And because of the type of grant that it is, the state is looking for the select board to designate the town manager to be the town's representative and act on the town's behalf. So we do see this come up every once in a while with certain types of state grants where they're looking for a, a specific vote of the select board. So that's the item before you must see.
Ready to move?
Yeah, I just, I want one question to ask. When they talk about asset management, are we talking about like inventory control? Or are we talking about maintenance of the system?
Yeah, so these are the capital assets and this information will be used to help develop future capital maintenance plans for the water and wastewater infrastructure that we have in town.
Mm-hmm, okay, thank you. Uh, yes, I think we're ready for a motion.
Ready. A move to authorize the town manager to act on behalf of the town for the wastewater asset management grant. Second, Ms. Escobedo.
Hi.
Ms. Sacramento.
Hi.
I'm Mr. Dane.
Hi.
And myself, Mary Hardman.
Hi.
Okay.
I'm, I'm not sure if we're expecting Liz Russ this evening, but I, I'm happy to take that.
Why don't we, uh, why don't we, why don't we deal with that since I think that's pretty routine, isn't it?
Yeah, it is. So, so this is, um, let's see. Item number eight, a request from the Regional Housing Services Office to increase the fiscal 24 budget for their revolving fund. So the request is that the current budget that was approved at the 2023 annual town meeting for the RHSO was three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. The request is to increase this by fifty thousand dollars to a total of four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Uh, this is a self-funding, um, revol- revolving fund is all revolving funds are. Um, it is authorized under Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53 E and a half, which provides for a process during the fiscal year if there's a need to increase the budget. And that process is that the budget can be approved outside of town meeting with the approval of the finance committee and the select board. The finance committee took this up at their meeting last week and voted to recommend approval. And it's, it's here before you this evening. And the reason for the request is that we had an additional community join the Regional Housing Services Group. And they are purchasing services from the group and that was not originally part of the budget. And, and we, I just will close by saying that as the host community, the town of Concord is responsible for maintaining the budget authorizations and that's why it's before you this evening.
So this doesn't increase the amount that Conker is paying for these services?
It does not.
It just enables them to collect more from, I think, native?
Native, to, to provide services to that community.
How much does, I know we always go off on this, but how much does Conker contribute to this now for 25 years? I know we're the.
Um, I can get it to you in a.
Okay, we're the, we pay the most of them.
Part of it's from CPC requests.
That's right, you're right.
While, while you're looking for that, um, I had two questions. That was one of them. Thank you, Mary. Um, my other question is, it seems that um, I know this year native joint and that's unusual, um, having a new town joint. But um, I've been on the select board um for four years or five years. It seems like almost every year we go through this exercise and I'm just wondering if we can put the limit of the revolving fund high enough at the next town meeting so we don't have to go through this. Because usually there's, there's eight or nine towns in this and inevitably one of the towns goes over their budget and the whole thing has to go up and we go through this. And it doesn't take a lot of time, but still.
You certainly can, can do that town meeting, can authorize any amount that is uh reasonable as, as a budget. You can't expend out of it unless the money is actually in the fund at the time that the bill is paid. I, I can tell you in, in the past, we've received some pushback on increasing revolving funds. But it's there, there has been some scrutiny and, and questioning.
Because they're not to exceed numbers.
Right, and, and I think that we have the internal controls in place to make sure that we're not over-expending. So it really is up to this board, finance committee and town meeting, whether or not you want to provide some additional buffer in this particular fund.
Yeah, just a little bit because it just seems like almost every year we're going through this.
And of course, if we don't, if we don't discuss it, it would take only about 30 seconds to approve the, the increase, which is far less time and effort than it is to deal with in a town meeting.
I guess that's the thing, plus it goes on the consent calendar, yeah.
And Mr. Chair, I have the number, um, this year, our budget for our HSO is sixty-seven thousand. And half is requested from CPC and the other half comes from the public.
Thank you.
So are, so are we the largest town in there?
Yes, we are, yes, we are.
Uh, I don't have the, everyone else's one, so the budget, sorry.
We're ready to entertain a motion.
Yes, a move to approve the request to increase the fiscal year 2024 Regional Housing Services Office revolving fund total by fifty thousand dollars from three hundred and seventy-five thousand to four hundred and twenty-five thousand. Second, Ms. Escobedo.
Hi.
Sacramento.
Hi, Mr. Dane.
Uh, I would like to think two minutes to cast my votes or at least matter takes us. Seven o'clock.
We can wait.
I'll say aye very slowly.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, aye.
Breathe in. You know, I'm saying Mary Hardman, aye.
Okay.
That was too fast.
So we can um rest her around, stretch uh for almost one minute now.
For a whole minute.
Before we open the public hearing.
This is for the um, uh, Comcast.
Is this going to be somebody uh online for this purpose?
Um, she, the same person from last time, Kathy, said that she would be online and Justin Richardson is also uh online from engineering. I think her last name is Maloney.
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 So it is now seven o'clock. Uh, do I hear a motion to open the public hearing?
Move to open the public hearing. Second, Ms. Escobedo.
Hi.
Second.
Hi.
Mr. Dane.
Hi.
And myself, Mary Hardman.
Hi.
Okay. Then we proceed because the um people there.
Ms. Malone. Around.
Good evening. Good evening. This is Kathy Maloney. Um, just coming through in audio. Uh, I apologize, had some trouble with the Zoom, but can you hear me?
Yes, even I can hear.
Yes. Well, first, I want to thank you all for this opportunity. Uh, it was nice to be in person last time. I apologize, this was the way I had to do it this evening, but very glad to be here and to um request the board's approval of a grant of location. Um, this is specifically for an address on Buttrick's Hill Road, number forty-eight. Um, you may have the paperwork in front of you, but um this is to excavate and place conduit from Comcast, a pedestal that exists currently um outside of 55 Buttrick's Hill Road and continue excavation across Buttrick's Hill and place another valve, a handhole uh near the electric pedestal that services the home. And uh, this is so that we can provide service to the occupants of forty-eight Buttrick's Hill Road. Any questions? I'm, I'm prepared to answer.
Are there any questions? Any um for the board? No questions? Comments? Any um members of the public like to um?
I'd like to hear from Mr. Richardson. I'd like to hear from Mr. Richardson.
Oh. Mr. Richardson? Oh, sir.
Justin Richardson, Assistant Town Engineer. Um, just, you know, uh, CPW Engineering has prepared a memo um with conditions and I believe that CMOB also has prepared a memo for this um grant of location. Uh, we would request that um those conditions um be part of the decision.
Okay. We read the memo with, uh, ready to check. Okay, any other comments or questions?
No, I thought you were pointing to the, I didn't realize.
I didn't know who Mr. Richardson was.
It's not wrong. I can hear your questions.
Okay, all right.
Um, Mr. Richardson is the Assistant Engineer at the Public Works Department. Is that correct?
That is true, yep.
And this is your home?
It is.
Okay, so, so I guess you're in favor of it.
I am, very much so. But it's been six months.
No, thank you for coming. It's um, nice to see somebody come to visit us. We get lonely sometimes. All right, um, any other questions or comments? Well, I guess it's going to be here in five minutes. So let's hear another thing and we'll move on.
Okay, move to close the public hearing. Second, Ms. Escobedo.
Hi.
Second.
Hi.
Mr. Dane.
Hi.
And myself, Mary Hardman. Aye. Move to approve the grant of location request for Comcast of Massachusetts Incorporated to install full axle cable, to be owned and operated by a petitioner along and across the public way or ways of forty-eight Buttrick's Hill Road and in accordance with the conditions provided by the Concord Municipal Light Plant and Concord Engineering Department. Second, Ms. Escobedo.
Hi.
Ms. Sacramento.
Hi.
Mr. Dane.
Hi.
And myself, Mary Hardman. Aye.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, now that brings us to.
Henry, can I interrupt a minute? We've been, I forgot to mention when he approved the consent agenda to thank the Concord Charlotte Unity Trust for the very generous gift to the Concord Recreation um for the um childcare scholarship. So I'm sorry belatedly, but thank you very much.
You have, you have, thank, thank them all of us.
All right.
All right. Uh, we just brought up the last item on the agenda, which is the town manager response, et cetera.
Okay, thank you. So we actually have three different things that we're going to cover here. And I don't want to lose track of, of the two letters from the finance committee. Uh, one relative to the two hundred and fiftieth committee spending and one relative to alternative funding sources and specifically the pilot agreements that um Ms. Katz mentioned at the beginning of the meeting. So there, there is a, a packet of information in your agenda packet this evening. This is the draft of what is going to the finance committee on Thursday. I would say the draft is probably about ninety percent complete. I don't think there's anything of substance that needs, that will be added that, that would be um part of the discussion, but there, there's just some additional information that we wanted to add. So this is coming to you prior to going to the finance committee to talk about the response to the guideline information request is a new step in the process. So if it seems new to you, it's, it's because it is. Uh, but for select board members who have been on the finance committee, you, you know what the finance committee's pattern is. The finance committee issues a guideline information request each fiscal year around August 1st. And they ask the cost centers, the town and the two school, um, the two, the two schools to respond to a number of questions, highlighting at a very high level um issues that we're seeing this early in the process, talking about uh goals and objectives and just trying to get a sense as they go into their final, their preliminary guideline process in October, um, sort of where the different budgeting groups are sitting. So, both the superintendent and I will be responding to their letters this Thursday. They will take that information in, use it to set the preliminary guidelines. Um, we will then take their preliminary guideline and start working with it and come back to them about a month later to talk about how that preliminary guideline may be affecting what we're seeing as we're developing the budgets. And then at the end of November, they will issue a final guideline. And it's after the issuance of the final guideline and as, at least on the town side, as we are trying to develop a final draft of the budget is when the select board has typically been plugged in and that's at, at the beginning of December. So this is, this is new that you're seeing it this early and, and we appreciate any feedback that you're able to provide. So there is a copy of the letter that is in the packet. Um, it starts with asking the town to identify the top three to five strategic issues. And so I have identified those in no particular order as recruitment and retention, maintaining capital infrastructure and balancing service level expectations through strategic planning. And there, there is a discussion of each and maybe I could just go through them at a quickly at a high level. And if, if you want to provide any comment, happy to do that. Not necessarily saying these are the, the only strategic issues, but when I tried to get to at the highest level, what are, what are we dealing with? These were the thing, the three things that popped up. So in terms of recruitment and retention, we talked a lot about this. We did, uh, completed the non-union class and comp, a new non-union class and comp plan that was presented to 2023 annual town meeting and approved. I can tell you it's been really helpful and we're seeing a difference in um the number of applicants, the quality of applicants and our ability to be able to hire people in non-union positions as a result of the, the new class in comp. But it's still a very difficult market. There are lots of jobs out there. We're seeing people um leaving positions for reasons that, that you wouldn't see them leaving for five years ago, 10 years ago. It, it's, it's very difficult to, to recruit and retain. I did note that five of our six union contracts are up for renegotiation um in fiscal 25, so we, we will likely be starting that after the holidays this fiscal year. So that is an issue for us that we, we need to be mindful that we have one compensation philosophy and strategy across all positions in town, uh, regardless of, of union or non-union. I did mention in here that we are looking, you know, a- anytime there's an opening, we're looking at our organizational structure to see if we could be doing something better to, to make a stronger, more resilient organization and to provide for succession planning. Uh, for those of you who, who, well, you've, you've probably all heard me talk about how deep some of these vacancies are going and how many hats some individuals are wearing in the organization because we do not have a great succession planning strategy right now. And, and we need, we need to do that in order to keep employees engaged. We need to be developing people and providing them opportunities to grow within the organization. And so that's, that's what some of this is geared at. Um, there is some detail that I, I'm going to just set aside and, and I'm happy to take questions on that. Should I stop by? By goal?
Yeah.
And if anything, on the first recruitment and retention. Okay.
Okay. Well, first of all, Karen, thank you so much for coming to the select board at this point and giving us a chance to have a discussion. This is really, really helpful. And I think what you have here is thoughtful and high-level strategic and thorough. It, it looks like really thought it through and really appreciate doing that. Um, in particular, I love your goals of creating efficiencies, resiliency and succession plan. That's a hit and a nail on the head and doing more with less by um, you know, adjusting things with our. you know, adjusting things with our increasing headcount and um resisting pressure to increase staff, because there's always groups that want more staff for this or that, or the other, and there's always that pressure and um, so I really appreciate you doing all of that, and I'll, I'll save my other comments for the other sections.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think, Carrie, that you really chose in the first, your three um goals are spot on as far as the things that we should be looking at, at least in the, in the short term, so I think you've, you're focusing on the right thing. Um, you're not looking at any incremental headcount next year, are you?
Um, so what I would say is, I, I do believe we've made a pretty strong commitment to talk about the diversity, D E I um person, staff person. I have not included that here specifically, um, because we're, we're just not, that, that's not the focus of this exercise. We're not talking about specific, you know, we're looking to add fifty thousand here or something. This is, this is a high level, but I would say we have made a commitment to, to have that conversation and decide, is, is this the time to, to add the headcount or to continue with contracted services?
Okay.
And I am expecting a, a strong recommendation from the D E I Commission on this is the time to add headcount.
But that was exactly why I made that comment about how you are also looking at the other side of you know, you say here that we're generally covering this work well through our contract. And, and then that maybe that will continue another year. And, and so I like that it will look at both alternatives. That's great.
And, and I'm wondering, um, I'm jumping to your third, unfortunately, where it says a balance through um strategic planning. When you say strategic planning, do you mean ops planning? Operations planning, as it relate, and that would relate to um recruitment and retention, I see a connection there.
So I, I think it, it's really two, two different thoughts that, that are melded together here. We have a lot of planning documents, just many, many planning documents that the town has invested a lot of money
Yep.
in developing, creating. And I know that people who are interested in partic- particular topics are very knowledgeable about the planning document that relates to their particular interest or interests.
Okay.
Uh. I'm not sure how, or it doesn't feel to me from my observation that collectively we are knowledgeable about the goals and priorities that are in the individual planning documents. And so one of the thoughts is to honestly, to lay them all out and identify what is being requested or identifying as work to be done in, in each of the documents and to start on an annual basis, pulling those together and saying, okay, in this year out of all of the things that have been, that we're working on these things. And then deciding, do we need do we need more headcount to accomplish that? Do we need another committee? Do we need another contracted service, or maybe we don't need anything? But I don't know that we're doing the best job looking across all of the spectrums and focusing our time and energy on, you know, coming together and, and, you know, we're, we're working on these five things this year. So it's that, part of it though is, is still some organizational analysis to make sure.
I think that's what I was talking about more, um, as opposed to, you know, what are all the plans we have as far as that documented some of the services people want or the priorities people want and how do we do those? I was more concerned thinking about, um, given all the workload we current have, currently have, what are the areas of responsibility? I'm worried about things falling through the cracks. I'll just get to that. So that's why I was thinking about a loss of planets as opposed to the strategic plan.
Yeah, and it really, in, in my mind, it's, it's two things. I think they're both important, but just to speak a little bit further on on the organization. We have a big organization for a community of eighteen thousand people. Uh, we have a lot of very talented, interested, eager staff that work here. Uh, I, I think things don't always move the way that we might like them to because the senior management team, I, I will say, is overloaded. But we have a group of division managers that are ver- very, very talented, people who want to continue here in their career. But we're, we're not always best positioned to have them help with work that is cross-departmental. And, and I know this from talking to people, that they're, they're interested and they want to be given the opportunity to, to, to be able to demonstrate that they're, they're the future of the organization. And so we need some, we need to carve out some time and space to, to give those individuals the opportunity. And I, I think it, it's just beneficial to the, to the whole organization, but change is hard here. Change is, it's, it's hard for the organization. I think it's hard for the community based on some of the feedback, you know, there, I know you have all received questions about why, why is this happening? Why is that happening? And we certainly appreciate the questions, but change is inevitable. And the, the, the workplace and the environment is so incredibly different now than it was before the pandemic and and how it was the decade before that. And, and so we are, we are trying to be able to address the needs without really grooming the organization.
Right, right. I think you're spot on that. One of the biggest challenges is that we need to do a better job of working across silos. Um, that, you know, like if I go to a committee meeting, that committee has that charge and that staff person and that. But how do we get them also working with the other parts of the organization? Because it's all um, it's all connected. And yet we don't have enough of those opportunities and, and ways to do that.
It's more than connected, sometimes they're conflicted.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think that's why it's important to, to start developing shared objectives, right?
And I mean, one of the, I think one of the most challenging is the uh the interplay of regulation and economic and divided. And uh, yeah, it's, it's, it's a complex to strike and to uh to satisfy both, like both goals.
And I think another big challenge is that, you know, we want better schools, we want more recreation facilities, we want more action on climate change, we want to do all these great things. But we have finite resources, finite staff, finite budget. Um, so how do we set priorities? It's a very big challenge in this town.
Yes, well. Unfortunately, what happens is that people want things
Right.
Um, you know, don't, don't seem to understand that they are, they're directly affected by the cost of those achieving those objectives.
Right, that's right. So sometimes it's making real, whoever else left gets what they want, and that might not be the best uh priority.
And in fact, that is an important thing in that the, most of our committees and our departments have their own agendas.
Right.
And.
And the charge is set up that way, right? You know, this is your mission.
Well, it, it is in fact, it is the fact for one reason or another. And the only, the only I think the only two boards that are like really are operating across all areas are this board. And we don't have an agenda other than to make things work as, as we can, and the Finance Committee.
Correct.
And there are the generalists who are dealing with how you do all the things in the various departments and committees are, are in their ask and accomplish or want to accomplish.
So I do appreciate Carrie trying to think across these silos and figure out. I, I like the idea that you have of creating an action plan from all the documents that we already have. At least starting with that before we do another step. You know, let's, we've already agreed to some wonderful things and we've accomplished a lot of things already. Um, in envision Concord, for example. Well, maybe uh we need to document that. A lot of people have forgotten what's even in envision Concord, right? Um, so.
Yeah, I don't think you need another plan. I really don't. Um, and more just looking at your org chart, which you've already started to do, to see how you could do better. You know, I think you've already started the work that you've done. And I'm, I'm not a big planner, I've been, I've yet again, another plan.
In, in the, my, my, my plan, I guess it's a roadmap uh of, of how we're going to implement, not, not another, another plan to, to implement. But how, what's the roadmap to implement, what we have?
Yeah.
What are the costs associated? Um, and what are the potential trade-offs? Because we can't, we can't do everything. And we need to be in a position to say, uh, you know, we can't do that. Here's what we're doing, we can't do that right now.
I agree.
But we're, we're doing all of these other things.
Right, yeah.
And, and I guess I understand what you're probably gonna get to anyway, besides, you know, what are the costs and what are the priorities? What are the revenue sources? Um, cause you've heard me talk, uh, I know you're gonna get to the same, we're gonna talk about the pilots. We're gonna talk about using these. We need to be like really creative about we don't have enough funding in the general fund, so what are we gonna do to be creative to get more grants, to get more pilots and all this? To get these things accomplished, you know, yeah, good point.
Um, the, the third the third strategic issue is maintaining capital infrastructure. Um, for, for those former Finance Committee members, you know, our investment, capital investment policy is seven to eight percent of total budget. I always calculate based on um property tax levy. And I, I feel like I can do that because the, the financial policies are policies that documented practice and they were documented by finance staff. They weren't, they weren't approved by select board of the Finance Committee. And to me, it's easier to, to key things to property tax levy because the budget, it's always, well, what what's the budget? What number are you, are you going with? Uh, you know, is it, is it the guidelines, the, the full budget, does it include warrant articles? Uh, so I, I just tag it to seven to eight percent of property tax levy. Two to three percent of it should go to tier one and uh no more than five percent to tier two. So tier, tier one, there's a chart in there. Uh, we call tier one twenty-five thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand. I think you, you may find in the, the Capital Planning Task Force report, tier one, we were popping out at a hundred thousand. Well, you can't get anything for a hundred thousand. That, that really was when we could buy the uh or, you know, you could almost buy a big truck for, for Public Works. Well, you can't buy those now for, you know, for less than a couple hundred thousand dollars. So that's tier one. We fund that through cash. That's the cash outlay. Tier two is two hundred and fifty thousand, two million dollars, and that's what we, we fund through issuance of debt within the levy. Now it, it would be very difficult to, to fund anything at two million dollars, any item at two million dollars within the levy. But that's how it's laid out in the, in the report that we have from the Capital Planning Task Force. So I did mention that we are in, still in the process of developing the, the next five-year plan, which is fiscal twenty-five to twenty-nine. Um, in, in the current year's plan, we identified ten point eight million dollars in tier one capital needs uh over that five-year period, fiscal twenty-four to twenty-eight, and thirty-three million dollars in, in tier two over that five-year period, which includes nine hundred thousand dollars per year for Concord Public Schools. Um, as mentioned earlier in the meeting, we don't set aside enough money for infrastructure maintenance, roads, sidewalks, drainage. Um, there was a, a reference that in fiscal twenty-five, the, what was submitted for engineering for that category of expenses was eleven million dollars. Uh, what we have found typically is, or what I should say is i- if we allocated two to three percent of tier one spending, what we spend, wh- what we use to fund through cash, that, that is a good benchmark, you know, we've, the trend that we have for, for capital items that are submitted, if you're calling the top of it two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that two to three percent really, really works. Uh, it doesn't work or won't work if you want to, you know, raise that cap from two fifty to five hundred thousand or, or, or anything else, we would run into problems. What's not working for us right now is that tier two spending. Uh, and based on the level of spending requested by Public Works, that really is, now we're talking about a tier three project. And, but we don't want to we don't want to get into a habit where we're paying for road maintenance with excluded debt.
We, we probably don't want to be paying for it with any kind of debt, right? But we had it.
If you're keeping, I mean, in, in an ideal world, yes, we, we would pay a significant amount. Uh, but we are not in a position, right now we're, we're budgeting about two million dollars worth of debt service for roads. You know, it, it, it's not enough. Uh, I do have some ideas for funding, but you'll have to wait until next month when we talk about uh capital. Cause we're still, we're still working through that, but I do have some thoughts on how we might look at funding roads.
So Carrie, is this, um, is, remind me, is the tier two in the guideline or outside of the guideline?
Outside.
It's outside of, yeah, that's good. Um, but it does, but it does impact the levy, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And did the capital plan? Did the capital task force come out with five million for that? Um. But that's different than this two million, right? That's a bit different.
Yes, in, in the, they did, yes, they did. Five, they did do fi- five million. We can't fund.
Right.
We can't fund tier two, and so thi- this is what I'm using, and, and the, the task force, the five million was exempt debt. Or e- excluded debt, right? Our practice really is, if it's over two million, we're, we're talking.
Yeah, cause that five million was also a multi-year definition. That, I don't think that's the same, it's like apples and oranges, so.
Yeah, well, you know, I, yeah, okay.
Sorry, I shouldn't have even brought that up.
Just, no, no, it's, it's fine. We didn't have a lot of discussion about what the, what that threshold was for, for tier.
And also I know that the Finance Committee is working to get a better look at that, the nine hundred K that you have reserved for CPS. They're, they're trying to implement a process where they'd actually do a, a zero-based budget for the tier two capital, just like they do their operating budget. So rather than give nine hundred K every year,
Yeah.
it would be maybe more, maybe less.
Yeah. So are there other questions on the strategic goals? Or anything, anything from Linda?
No, I've been following this discussion.
Okay. Alright, so. next, on, let's see, on page six of of my handout, uh, the next item that the finance committee is looking for feedback or information is the ARPA spending. And so just to to refresh everybody's memory, the town received five million, six hundred fifty-four thousand dollars worth of ARPA spending, uh, or ARPA funding. The select board identified a policy that we would, we would spend this money or program this money over a period of twelve years, beginning in fiscal twenty-two, that we would do that in conjunction with developing the operating and capital budgets. To date, we have committed three million, twenty thousand dollars. And that means the balance to award is two million, six hundred, thirty-five thousand dollars. Now, the the thought is that we would be looking to program in fiscal twenty-five, a million, three hundred and twenty thousand dollars, and then the balance in fiscal twenty-six. So the the issue is that the funds have to be committed by December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, so essentially in a year, and then expended by December thirty-one, twenty twenty-six. So I think we we have to figure out how we are going to commit, and I think we, you know, i- i- if we have to to do anything special to commit, because we're talking about fiscal twenty-five, which ends uh, June thirty, twenty twenty-five, and fiscal twenty-six, it ends June thirty, twenty twenty-six. Sorry, that was, I probably didn't need to say any of that. That was stream of consciousness. Probably not at all.
Consciousness?
Sorry. Oh.
I I have a question about uh FY twenty-four.
Yeah.
Can you remind us, um, that's the already now, right?
Yes.
So can you remind us what has been committed for this current year?
Yeah, so that there is a chart on page seven. Uh, half a million dollars for the two hundred and fiftieth celebration. A hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a level three charger or level three charging at at public safety.
Oh, I see it now.
Yeah, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for a facility study, and this would be added to a prior appropriation. So we'd have three hundred thousand dollars, and with this, we're looking at feasibility of uh improvements to public works and and public safety. And, you know, tha- that's a a pretty comprehensive study that we'll be looking at. Hundred and thirty thousand dollars for park improvements, which includes resurfacing of of courts at Emerson and Rideout. A hundred thousand dollars to uh to develop the stormwater management fund that is underway. It is possible that we will have a warrant article at at twenty twenty-four, annual town meeting. The seventy-five thousand dollars for the DEI consultant. Fifty thousand dollars for um is identified as water due due diligence. This we're looking um, thi- this is probably water or wastewater, and we're looking at the MCI property. We hope to to take a look at the White Pond area to start doing some work there. That's what's intended with that. Forty thousand dollars for GIS, just adding um some additional data to the existing system, and then the twenty-five thousand dollars for the strategic planning effort.
What what are you thinking of doing at White Pond again?
We'd like to to start looking at options over there for um for wastewater treatment.
So Kerry, out of this one point three million dollars, right, that we allocated, do you think we'll spend that all?
And Well, if past practice is any indication, no, our eyes are bigger than our capacity to to do all of this. So the the nice thing is, you know, this is not tied to a specific town meeting appropriation, so we carry it forward. If it takes us a year and a half to do something, then it takes a year and a half to do it.
I remember Bob Lowers, one of the things he said is, it's one thing to do your capital plan, but it's another thing to actually spend the money. And and a lot of times you just start in cycles to do that, so.
I I can tell you, in speaking to colleagues in other communities, they say, you still have ARPA money left?
Wow.
Yeah, we're moving slow and trying to be thoughtful about how we're allocating funding.
Great.
There was a request that we share our five year forecast, so that is in the packet on page eight. This is very high level for uh fiscal twenty-five to twenty-nine. What I will tell you or ask is that you don't get overly excited about what this is showing, excited, not in a positive way. Uh, we know, we do not expect to bring forward a budget in these amounts, but based on, based on our trend, this is, this is what it would look like. Uh, it is difficult because I, as I've mentioned, five of our six unions are, their contracts are up for renegotiation. There is an amount built into this forecast to settle those contracts. Um.
Is that is that amount that's built in um a a known amount, so it is, so the availability of the fact of the negotiations?
Well, it's it's not, it's not known. Um, we don't publicize that, but it it is. It's in the forecast.
There's some place, yeah.
What now? Uh, we we are doing, as you know, we are doing some work on health insurance. We, we are starting that process with our employee insurance advisory committee tomorrow. I do expect that we will be able to make some changes in health insurance that will have uh significant benefit both to the town and to employees. And so you will notice, if you look at line twenty-seven, employee benefits, that's not just health insurance, but but the largest chunk is health insurance. That we're actually showing a slight decrease in fiscal twenty-five. And I I do believe that that's realistic based on the information that we have, so that that will be helpful. So this, in terms of debt service, this has all of our existing debt service, including the two borrowings for the middle school. But it does not project future debt service yet here. On the next page.
Wait a minute, it has what's already been borrowed?
Yeah, so it has, we had a twelve million dollar and a fifty nine dollar.
Right, but it doesn't have the second fifty million dollar.
Right.
Okay.
On the next page, page nine, there's just a description of the uh of the assumptions that are used to prepare this document. There's a, the next request then was just an update on the close or the closing of fiscal twenty-three and how things are looking in twenty-four. Uh, we are with the with the conversion from admins to munis, we're we're a little bit slower than where we would typically be. What I can tell you for fiscal twenty-three, though, it is looking like we will be returning about eight hundred thousand dollars on the expenditure side. So coming in in total about eight hundred thousand under budget. And it looks like um our revenue over budget estimates is about plus three million dollars. And the reason for that is, uh, you could see on page nine, most of that is, oh gosh, I have, I have it backwards, where it says state aid, that's actually local receipts. And um, so the the bulk of that is coming in local receipts, and the bulk of the overage and local receipts is investment income. And the main driving factor there are the bond proceeds, the we have the bond proceeds for the middle school project that are generating investment. So one of the recommendations, we have three point five million dollars in the middle school stabilization gap. One of the recommendations, we wanted to get to five million, is to take that one point five from the free cash certification and put it in into the stabilization.
If I understand that what you're saying, right now, if things hold, we're gonna have about three point eight million to put into free cash between the under expenses and the over revenue?
We are going to have about three point million to add to the free cash calculation.
Okay, what about the eight hundred savings and expenses?
Three, or did I say three point eight million?
Three point eight million.
To add to the calculation.
Great.
There are other, there are lots of other things that happen.
Yeah.
So
It's only October, so.
Yeah, we may put three point eight in and get something less out, not, I wouldn't imagine significantly less, but it's not as simple.
Yeah.
As as that.
We can't, okay.
And and we hope in the next few weeks or so that we will have an estimate of free cash.
Good. And if, but as I started, I started by saying, if this holds, so if this holds, you're suggesting that we might have money to beef up the stabilization plan for the middle school?
Yes, okay, yes, okay. Absolutely. And and again, because most of that overage and local receipts is coming.
The the interest on the bond cash, the cash you bought from, okay, good.
Was this something that is is a surprise, or or did we already know this?
Well, the interest rates have gone up since we issued the bonds.
Yeah, and and we had, I mean, we have, we have the bond proceeds. We we receive them in a lump sum when we close.
Right, so we knew that that was going to happen.
But we didn't know the interest rate or that's what we go on.
Right, right.
What I, what I would say is, we didn't, when we put the fiscal twenty-four budget together, we didn't necessarily know what we were gonna borrow, because we do budget so far in advance of.
This is great, this is, okay. So you said in a few weeks, you'd have a better feel for what's free cash.
So in a few weeks?
Oh.
Anthony's gonna make it.
This is good news, thank you.
We always like to borrow more money.
Well, you can, but there's this thing called arbitrage, so you can't, you can't, you can't make all kinds of money on borrowing.
You can't, a lot of people do.
But municipalities can.
I know, I'm just joking.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So the, i- in terms of how fiscal twenty-four is going, there's, there's nothing terribly exciting. We're not seeing anything that we didn't expect. We're still working on allocating that five hundred and fifteen thousand dollar adjustment. Uh, but we we know we haven't, we haven't, we haven't completely allocated that yet, but we know we have. Um, on page ten, the next item that the finance committee asks about are, you know, wh- what are you looking at in terms of future service levels or additional costs? And they're looking at the next five years. So I I identified we we need to be funding capital, at least at the policy levels that we have identified in our policies. Ambulance, uh, we we have talked about this before. We are currently loo- looking at the feasibility of moving our basic life support BLS service to an advanced life support ALS service or paramedic level service. Uh, right now, we receive ALS ambulance through a multi-town cooperative. Over time, communities have dropped out. We're concerned about the long-term viability of that group. So we're we're looking at providing that level of service in-house. Uh, I expect to have a recommendation within the next couple of months. I do expect that the recommendation is going to be that it is feasible and the right thing to do to move in that direction. We do know that one of the recruitment and retention issues we have in the fire department is the fact that we only operate a a BLS service uh in in order to to provide that level of service, you just, you have to be a licensed EMT versus a paramedic. So we do lose people who want to practice at the paramedic level. There would be an increase in revenues. Uh, and we're hoping that it would offset the additional cost to move to paramedic level services.
So would that analysis, we um, looking at the, uh, I guess I'll call it user fee, at the ambulance fees that we're charging, like um, are the insurance companies um, you know, paying back? How is that all working? Are they covering the costs? Um, that kind of thing.
So it it may, uh, there, that really is almost a separate project. On a regular basis, we need to be looking at fees and making sure that the fees are covering the cost of services. So it may, um.
I just hope it does, because I know that particular fee hasn't been looked at in a long time and um I have this instinct that there's a lot of revenue that could come in if we tightened up that fee. Um, but I've been asking for it for many years, and it has, it's it's a very complicated analysis. I know it's gonna take a lot of time, but it might be worth doing, yeah.
Aren't the, aren't the fees received for the ambulance services set by Medicare and the insurance companies? And we really don't have much to say about how much we get for a run.
So they're not set. They are set locally, but we certainly take into account the reimbursements that are provided through the federal programs, and it's a balancing act. Uh, because you 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 can set fees anywhere where you want, where you want, but what you're gonna get from the insurance company is another story. So that's, that's why it is complicated, because you have to take those reimbursement rates into account.
And almost all of the revenues are from insurance, aren't they?
I, in Massachusetts, yes, almost.
Right, and then you have to look at the collection rate, and is it worth pursuing them? Uh, when they don't pay right away, it's it's pretty complicated.
So then I I mentioned transportation, uh, I mentioned both senior services and and social services. So in terms of senior services, you know, we are bursting at the seams at at Harvey Wheeler. Uh, and there is a need and an interest in providing additional programming there. And so we're looking at how we can make better use of space. Um, if there's additional space in, you know, would that, would that be used? Uh, so that that's something that that we're looking at.
Is it bursting at the seams during um the peak hours, like from nine AM to two PM, and then kind of empty on weekends and late afternoons, or?
It is certainly less busy early morning, late afternoon. Uh, so we're looking at, is is it possible to have some other recreational programming during those hours? Um, and, yeah.
Is that because we have our aging population? Is that why, or is it because the uh programs there are are so much better and more people are participating?
Well, I I think it's both, and and I think uh you know, we want to be able to provide programming that is interesting to a wide variety of ages. You know, we, there are many, there, there's more than one generation of seniors, you know. And um, you know, there's always an an interest in in getting people who will soon be seniors interested in what's happening at um senior centers.
Have you ever uh floated the idea of moving um the council on aging to maybe say where two 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 nine Main Street is? And using that building for um, say, housing? Because it's perfectly situated right near a village, right near a transit for housing.
I'm not sure I've actually heard that suggestion. I'm not sure I've actually heard that suggestion yet.
Yeah. I have, uh, I don't know, I mean, I've heard the idea of putting housing there because it's a perfect place for housing. I haven't heard a lot of people say, oh, let's move, uh, the senior center out to, um, out of Main Street.
Well, would that mean constructing a new facility?
Yes.
Well, we want, might want to look at some other facilities we have, that might be available along, probably not in that location, we have probably two, uh, school buildings, uh, that, uh, maybe got a bit out.
Yeah. Yeah, oh, and Ripley.
Yeah, yeah, Ripley, you're right.
Ripley needs a lot of work. Ripley's an expensive building too, needs a lot of work.
And the locations, I mean.
Might be, well, it might be.
The location department, you know.
Do we, okay, I know I said earlier that I don't like plants, but do we have any plan about using municipal properties and what would be the optimal, best use of some of these locations?
So, what we have is, is the facilities assessment from, from twenty twenty that is an audit of each of the fourteen different sites that we maintain through town with various options, um, uh, highest and best use.
Do you know if it addressed this at all? It's another one of those events that we didn't do anything with.
Um, well, we, we do, we do. It doesn't, it doesn't really get into, no, I don't think it gets into, to what you're looking at.
It, it just seems a shame sometimes to, um, you know, retrofit a building for a temporary use and then explain that that it needs, and there might be a better use for that piece of rest.
What I will say is, I'm, I'm not, I, I'm not necessarily suggesting any significant capital improvement to the building, this is my perspective.
Okay.
And then the last is, is social services, uh, we've talked about this before, that, um, you know, there, there is a level of service need that would go unmet if the town didn't provide any gap services. And so, we see more and more requests. And we have outreach workers at the senior center that work with the senior population. We have a community services worker who works with everybody that is under, um, under the age of sixteen. And we have two school resource officers. The school has, has lots of different support services. These, we're just all feeling an increased call to be able to, to meet a need. And so, we don't have anything specific that is presented here or, or identified, but it wouldn't surprise me if in the next five-year period, we would be, uh, firming up what those needs are. So, I think we provide them a variety of, of levels, you know, we have nursing services that are available through the COA. We just partnered with Town of Maine to hire a full-time public health nurse before we had contracted services. Uh, so I think we've been able to, to make a significant dent with small investments. But at some point in the next five-year period, there may be a need for a larger investment.
Is it there, um, I don't know what the title is, some kind of like mental health, um, counselor, or not counselor, um, mental health police officer or something one day a week or?
So, we have a, a clinician that works with the police department, and she's been with them probably three years at, at this point, and been very, very, very effective in, in the services that she's been able to provide to residents and the police. So, I think I'm gonna skip over capital because we, we talked about capital. I'll just touch on the rest of this quickly. Uh, they asked about the status of our long-term liabilities, OPEB, which is retiree health insurance and then pension. Uh, there's some information in here about the status of, of each of these long-term liabilities. So, OPEB, our most recent valuation is six thirty twenty twenty-two. As of this date, the total OPEB liability, the, the town's liability for retiree health insurance was fifty-one point one five million. And it is twenty-seven point seven, the funding level is twenty-seven point seven three million or about just under fifty-five percent funded. Uh, so you can see from the chart below that there really are very few triple A rated communities that have OPEB funding levels at what the town has. And they might have something higher, but then if you look at their, their retirement liability, they're lower there. So, the, the town of Concord really is very well positioned to manage its long-term liabilities.
But your, uh, your liability is something that is not adjusted for current value, is it?
It is.
It is, as well as your funding, they're both adjusted for.
So, we, we track both market value and actuarial value for, for each of these. And then on the retirement side, uh, you know, as, as of the most recent valuation, which is the calendar year, uh, one one twenty-two, this, the system's total liabilities are two hundred and twenty-seven point eight million and, and at a, uh, total assets of two hundred and twelve point eight million or about almost ninety-three point five percent funded. So, we are well on our way to being fully funded in terms of our retirement liability, uh. I should note that based on the most recent valuations, we expect the OPEB liability to be the unfunded portion to be fully funded at the end of fiscal thirty and the retirement fully funded at the end of fiscal twenty. So, that, that is some very good news, and there, there will be significant, a significant reduction in annual budget as a result of, of these liabilities being satisfied. So, again, some data on a, a sample of triple A rated communities. These are the best positioned in terms of meeting long-term liabilities. They are, um, somewhat different, you know, these are not necessarily the communities that we generally compare ourselves against, but what I did was I pulled out the communities that were best positioned in, in meeting these long-term liabilities. Um, the, the last thing is, uh, the finance committee asked for a report showing balances in our capital projects accounts, and there's a report in there. So, that, that is it on this topic, but we have to talk about the two finance committees.
Right, okay.
Are we set with this?
Yeah.
Great job.
Thank you again, that was very informative, some good news and business.
It's, it's really great to have a financial person, the, the manager.
Um, I'm giving it up.
At least, at least you speak the language.
So, you have, you received two letters from the finance committee, one asking for a status of, uh, you know, what's happening with the two fifty and, and then one on revenues.
Right, and I've commented both of them.
Okay, do you wanna?
Since they're addressed, because they.
Sure.
So, with regard to the, um, uh, with regard to the, um, letter relating to the two fifty, uh, the first question or comment is whether or not we are, uh, seeking, uh, funds from, um, state and federal sources. And the answer is yes, we are working on, on that very hard, uh, because we realize that without that funding, we will, uh, uh, be facing a very difficult situation, is running, uh, and, uh, an undertaking of this magnitude. Um, and the position we've taken with our legislators is that, um, it's, at this point, to this degree, it's not even reasonable to expect that a, that a town of the size of Concord, um, even though affluent, is able to bear a, an expense of in excess of a million or a million and a half dollars to, uh, to finance, um, essentially what is a, uh, public safety challenge. The cost of running the events is not going to be significant, although we have, of course, a choice as to what activities are included. Um, but those, the expenses are large, the, the, the expenses other than public safety are largely within our control. And if worse comes to worse, we probably can make everything else work with the funding we have in the town, but if we don't get additional funding from the state or federal government, the seven hundred thousand dollars of what is left of it will have to go towards the public safety expense, which will probably be, require at least another half million dollars as a bare bone spaces. So, it is critical, there are two things that are critical. One is that we continue to pursue, uh, state funding and, and press on the legislature, uh, how, uh, critical it is to receive it. And the other is that because, um, um, because of three factors, one is that the the size, the size of the event is largely out of our control. We don't know how many and who will show up. Uh, because, uh, our priority is public safety, because without having a safe environment and well-controlled environment, um, the, 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 uh, the out, outcome will be unpleasant, if not worse. And third, that because the amount of state and federal support at this point, and probably fairly far down the road, will be unknown, we have to think about a plan B, and we need to perhaps even think about finding a way to reserve, to establish a contingent to reserve to pay for the hundreds of public safety person, um, personnel and facilities that will be needed if a hundred and fifty or two hundred thousand people show up on that, uh, Easter weekend in twenty twenty-five. Um, so, I mean, that's, I think that is the reality we have to face. Uh, and so, that is, that is pretty much what I have to say.
I'm wondering if the fin, I'm thinking of the finance committee positions I've had, and I'm wondering, um, do we expect that when we talk with the committee on December fourth, the executive committee, that we will get something called, like I'm envisioning a sources and uses schedule? Let's say here are the expected sources, here are the, the uses that we anticipate now, so that we can see if we're, how far, if we're in balance and.
I haven't seen anything look like that so far. What I've seen is, as, uh, what I've seen is estimates of expenditure. Um, and those estimates of expenditure come from the various subcommittees that, um, are, um, involved in their particular activities, and, um, they don't reflect any revenues received, and they are essentially wish lists.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
But is there gonna be some kind of, you know, polishing of that? What is the, what are we expecting to accomplish on December fourth?
Uh, this is something that I currently, I, I am, I'm going to meet with the current chair of that committee and discuss that, so we can see whether or not we can get any useful information at that meeting.
Well, I requested it beyond the agenda, and, um, working with the chair, and then I was at the meeting. One of the things that they are going to, I think, finally have is a track, uh, list of events or a track calendar, which we haven't seen before, so that would be helpful. Because you need that before you can do the sources and uses, we didn't even know what the events were. Um, the next thing we need though is, yes, a budget and a revenue plan. And I'm not sure how far along they're going to be by early December. They're very aware now that they need to have it. How they're gonna get there, I don't know, and I would urge them again to figure out how to do some private fundraising and set up some user fees or to, and maybe work with Anthony's team to set up a revolving fund or, um, there's gotta be some way that we can.
We have to start focusing on actual, um, productive activities.
Right.
Um, the, um, also, when you talk about the, uh, the list of proposed activities, uh, I wanna compare those proposed activities with what is actually called for in the charge we gave to the committee, because they are not really, uh, insane. So, uh, and, and something that needs to be worked on as well.
Right, and then the final thing is, they want to select for to approve and sign an intermunicipal agreement between Concord and Lexington and some other town.
Arlington and Lincoln.
Right, okay.
So, that, that is, um, you know, that, that is actually happening at, at this town manager level. Um, however, uh, my, um, uh, my, my feeling about that from the very beginning has been, if, if our funding is so limited in general, that we may have to use a substantial portion of, of the money available for absolutely essential public saving purposes, uh, I don't want to commit any funds from that, from that seven hundred thousand dollars until we know that we're gonna have enough money to pay for the things that we truly need to survive.
Okay, but isn't this a decision that the executive committee will be making? And this, I, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm frustrated, because we've been asking for this for a year.
Yeah.
For a budget from the committee to find out what are the sources and what are the uses? And we're still here wondering if people even know what we're asking for. So, I think, I think we're clear on what we're asking for. Um, and I'm wondering if, if it's reasonable to think that on December fourth, when we have this conversation, we'll at least, we'll have something. Because that's, I mean, we've been asking, the finance committee's been asking.
Right, we're all really frustrated by this.
Very frustrated.
I think they understand some of them, what they have to do now, which I'm not sure they understood.
So, I had a conversation with one of the co-chairs last week and asked essentially about all of the things that you're talking about. And he felt that the December fourth meeting was, was a good timetable, that with the holidays, with the change in the leadership on the committee, that they needed that amount of time to get ready, but I had specifically asked him about if he would be prepared at that meeting to provide a list of planned events, a detailed budget showing how the seven hundred thousand dollars would be allocated, an outline of additional funding sought, and I mentioned grants, donations, federal, state, town funding, particularly, uh, whether there might be a warrant article, um, and then any other funding, you know, what the status is of their, um, well, donations, they would be donations, and then also about the, the IMAs that's requested. So, the intermunicipal agreement has been reviewed um, at length by the communications subcommittee. It was brought to the executive committee, it's my understanding that the executive committee endorsed it. Um, it's been reviewed by town council, by the group of the four town managers. We made some additional revisions, provided, just last week, provided a copy back to, to our committee and our communications subcommittee. So, I, I do think on December fourth, we will have all of this.
So, on the IMAs, is it asking that each town contribute funds?
Yes.
Fifty thousand dollars.
I see. From this, from each town?
Yes, and, um, the, all four towns through whatever group is, is running this effort, everybody seems to be on the page, at the same page. The four communities are interested in, in, in entering into the IMAs and, uh, the scope of services is outlined. into the IMA and the scope of services is outlined.
One of the significant things about that agreement is that it only covers consulting services for um um for um.
It's e- events, it's identified as events.
But it doesn't, but it doesn't deal with the cost of the services that the consultant will prescribe uh in order to achieve the the.
Right, the consultant may recommend, and there's a specific reference to a transportation plan. That's part of the scope of services, but it does leave open that the consultant may recommend that additional, an additional consultant may need to be.
Or additional, or the the cost of services recommended, like whether it's printing or internet services or other things of that kind, um will will be over and above the the contract price for the consultancy.
It could, yes.
Of of necessity and because the the consultant is going to design programs that will have costs. So, anyway.
So Carrie, um, the public ceremonies and celebrations committee is in, they have a line item in every year's budget, right?
They do.
Is, are you going to be putting something in that extra next to the FY twenty five budget? Are you gonna hope that that's covered by the two hundred and fifty of the?
No, the the request looks like it'll be a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars up from you know, we're we're anywhere between forty and seventy five thousand dollars depending on the year. So the total for the parade, a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars, as I understand.
So that's a source.
So the the that is outside of the twenty twenty five budget because the public ceremonies committee is is still essentially responsible for running the parade.
The parade is part of the two hundred and fifty.
It's a part of it, but it is, it is, it's a fre- uh freestanding.
I think we should discuss all of this on in December, when they come in, because it's not.
I think so too, because I think the executive committee should be deciding how, where they're getting the money and how they're going to spend it. So earmarking something is beyond them, I don't feel. It's like outside of their purview does not feel right to me.
I I just want to know, it is un- it is unlikely that that additional request is going to be coming in within the guidance budget. I'm planning to flag because it's a one-time.
Okay. I understand. Thank you.
So that's, that's, that's letter.
It's one of them.
Letter number one and number two. The other letter is uh ask us about pilot uh programs.
Right.
If we are where we started this evening.
Yeah.
And um I just, I also uh distributed the country materials to everybody to give you some feeling for what's involved. And in particular, there are great, um, a lot of detail in the pilot program for the city of Boston, which um um deals with some of the complexities of designing these programs because um essentially, first of all, they're voluntary and they must be voluntary. Uh, and you can't really legally, you can't um twist any arms to get people to um right, volunteer. Um, and then a typical program often gives the institution a credit for the services that they provide to the city. Um, so then you balance the um what the what you get. I mean, for instance, if we were to tax one of the independent schools, um, the property of one of the independent schools in town, we probably would want to give them credit for the number of resident students that they educate, that they take off the public school budget, for instance. Um, or whatever, or what the services that we believe that Hammersmith Hospital provides to the town to balance off the fact that they have, you know, real estate worth many, many millions of dollars that that is not now taxed. So um thi- this is um, you know, it's 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 a very, I think it's a very challenging kind of project to undertake, but it makes a lot of sense that especially the uh nonprofit organizations who benefit from the from talent services uh do assume a share of the of the cost. Uh, notwithstanding the fact they are nonprofit and not subject to real estate tax by law. So, but it it's done in many communities and how they make it work is something we have to find out.
Right.
It's a, I assume it's having a program that's uh it's a program that has some attraction to it. Um, and that is um a subject of negotiation, probably with every institution. But if you have a standardized program, that that some of your institutions accept is probably more palatable to other institutions. So um it was something I never was really enthusiastic about in the past because I believe that, you know, um the reason that non- that nonprofit organizations were not subject taxless and we wanted to encourage them to locate in the community that they provide the benefit. Um, but they're here now and we have the expenses that we have to carry, uh many of which are attributable to them. Um, such as the social services, police, fire, and so on, that, you know, costs us the same, whether or not they're paying taxes. So uh I don't know how we could, if we want to pursue this, and I think it's, we want to pursue it and the finance committee wants to pursue it. And I don't know whether we need a consultant, whether we need a committee, we need some, we need um I think we're going to need some real know-how to to get this done.
Yeah.
Well, I I know that the um former town manager, Chris Wayland, spent many, many, many years negotiating. And I guess didn't really get a deal done with most of these. And I'm wondering, because it's very challenging, I'm wondering, Carrie, if you have any ideas how we might proceed with this.
Um, so first, I would say this this is something that is of particular interest to me. Um, and just in the six days Anthony's been here, I know it's of interest to him as well. I think what makes this different now than when uh former town manager Wayland took this up. I think somebody mentioned ten years ago, maybe longer than that, it's probably in the ten to fifteen year range, is the pattern we're seeing with uh the success other communities are having negotiating pilots. So for instance, the city of Lowell has been very successful in negotiating pilot agreements with UMass Lowell that is just buying up the entirety of the downtown. So that that's very different than when Chris would have been taking this up years ago. So I think we may have more success now just because of the pattern and practice other communities have established.
That's what I, eh, what I would point out in that, that there are, there are two kinds of of pilot programs. And one of them is one I think we already get some benefits from, and that is with property owned by state agencies.
Yes.
And so we do get, I think, some pilot programs of account of the MCI, Concord, some other state facilities.
They don't pay what they're supposed to pay on.
Well, that's another issue. But I mean, even by, I think by statute and some of the uh the um the essays that are available online from the Department of Revenue, they categorize these as state agencies. I'd also like, um, what do you call it? Um, uh, some of the uh solar energy facilities and special tax provisions for pilots relating to those. Then there's all the, all the, the rest, like the churches, the schools, and the hospitals. Now, how Boston does it, you have a list, the the materials I gave you, that's a list of the amount of money that the city of Boston collects from a list of about thirty or forty or fifty different uh nonprofit organizations located in the city of Boston. It's um, it's something we, if we want to pursue, we have to find out how to do it.
Yeah, and I think what I would ask before we set up a task force, hire a consultant, give us a little time to be able to put together a plan of action.
Mm-hmm.
I I know people have been interested in this for years. Uh, but our capacity is somewhat limited. It is increasing and I I do think that we can do something. But I I would like for us to have the opportunity to put a proposal together for you on how to tackle this.
That would be, what's the timeframe, about six months?
I I think six months would be great. I I understand all of these um nonprofits develop their budgets at different times and and now might be a particularly great time to have this resolved, but we don't. And and we know, even when we identify what we want to do and what is a reasonable ask, that it's going to be a period of time to to be able to implement, so.
Well, the plan of action that you talked about earlier, um, you think six months would be a reasonable time to to?
Well, six months would be just just before town meeting.
Okay, right.
I I mean, I think one of the things you want to do for starters is to make a list of all the institutions and their assessed, and what the their assessed real estate values are, so we have some idea.
We would.
And if we have, we have that, I think we have, I think.
What about, what about in March? Would that be a doable timeframe? Because yeah, town meeting is not the right time to do.
So I think we can put that tentatively. Uh, and and I'll just, I'll have to keep you up to date on how it's going.
That would be really great.
I want to, yeah, I want to real, I don't, I know that right now you you're rebuilding the finance organization. You're rebuilding your whole structure, actually. Um, we've got town town meeting coming up. You know, I want to make a realistic, I don't want to overburden.
Right.
You know, I want to be realistic about when can you really expect something and not just have everything done.
I think it's it's just hard right now to say, is March more realistic than April or or May? So if we, and I'm not even going to look at Anthony when I make this.
I'm not either.
Why don't, why don't we say March for now and and if it doesn't seem doable?
Right, great.
But the important thing is, and I think there's um uh, please take a consensus, this is something we want to pursue seriously.
Yes, right.
Definitely.
That's right.
And that relates to, we have these two letters from the finance committee. Are we thinking we're going to answer these letters in writing like they're addressed to you, Henry, like? Are we, uh, what do we want to do with this?
Well, why, I I had um uh, there was one other item that in particular that I thought we ought to address.
Okay.
And that is the um increasing town property rental fees or in activity impact fee and sale rental and or sale rental of vacant or interutilized town, or E T, Ebody Middle School revenue.
Right.
Et cetera, is that um um that is um that's a very serious issue. It's something that we brought up for, it was something that we brought up in particular as a means of reducing the 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 debt load for the for the new middle school because there was there is real, there is real self substantial value in the Ebody
Right.
property, um, which could, if commercially developed, would not only bring in a one-time uh a one-time payment for the property, but also within, you know, which might be eight or ten or more million dollars. And then pay real estate taxes every year, you know, maybe three, four, five hundred thousand dollars of real estate taxes for a development on an eighteen acre.
Right, right.
Disallow partial. So that is, that's. But then we have all of the competing uh requests for their needs for use of the land, whether it be for housing, for conservation, for um recreation. And so I think um it may call for a a, you know, policy intention on our part as to how, whether we consider that land that the town controls so such a valuable resource that we do not want to we we do not want to dispose of at that time. Um, because, you know, um, land will become more and more scarce and will become more and more expensive. And if it's penny wise to sell and develop land today that you might get five million dollars for, it's going to be worth fifty million dollars five years from now.
I agree. I I don't think we can be looking at these sites in in isolation, like, you know, back to, do we have a municipal, a strategic municipal property plan?
Well, right.
Because if we, you know.
I think we have to answer this letter in general.
We do, we do.
Yes, we absolutely support these ideas like the pilots and the sale of rental, but we're not going to talk specific buildings right now. And I would add two more bullet points to their list. They have three bullet points here, the pilot, the rental fees, and the sale or rental of vacant buildings. But I think in in addition, again, I'm going to say we need to analyze user fees, make sure they're covering the costs. And that includes maintenance costs, overhead costs, employee benefits, capital. Why should the general reven- revenue, the general fund be paying for these things? And number two, another bullet point, um, update the enterprise fund chargebacks and make sure they're covering the costs. And that would include the high school, you know, all of these things. So I think we should write back and say, yes, we agree with all this and the user fees and the enterprise funds need to be looked at.
Oh, that's good. That's, I think that's great. I think some of those ideas are great. I guess I'm 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 also thinking, what's a realistic expectation to set as far as doing something about it?
Right.
You know, I mean, they're great ideas. I think we've had it before, that we we light up about them and then the day-to-day takes takes over. Um, so.
Right.
What's a rea- I want to be realistic. I mean, yes, these are, that's great, Carrie. I think these are great ideas, but realistically, I mean, we've got a.
Right, and it's a competition between uh having enough staff and enough time. But if we don't do this, we're going to need an override sooner. And and the wrong people are going to be paying because we hadn't adjusted these things properly. So i- it's one resource or the other.
Yeah.
Right, so, so how, what do you think, Carrie, and is realistic about what can be done with with all of these revenue sources? I mean, what kind of timeframe?
Well, that is, I mean, it it it's a a difficult question, the the chargebacks um you know, that I think that's the one that we're always hoping that we can address and um perhaps there's an opportunity. We certainly are going to look at it. Are we going to finish it this fiscal year? I I don't. I don't know. Uh, I think in another few weeks, maybe when we come to you in December with with the budget, we can take this up again because we will be better positioned. Right now, we're trying to get um to launch our fiscal twenty five budget process. We're about two weeks behind. And we're trying to put together the capital plan. I think at that December fourth meeting, if if we could talk to you again about what we think we might be able to do yet for the fiscal twenty five, that would give us those couple of weeks.
That that sounds great. I guess I'm wondering if these things can be part of the twenty five budget process. Um, because to the extent that you can find one, one of these are the sources, it takes the pressure off.
Yeah.
So can it be made and be part of it?
I think what's probably most likely for twenty five would be a review of fees
Yeah.
and to charge backs.
Okay.
Pilots, while we might make some good progress.
Right.
That involves negotiations with with other people.
That's a multiple.
Just as a question, when you're negoti- or do you negotiate with like the enterprise funds for what the chargeback will be from? Or do you just tell them in, what's the process?
Yeah, the the prac- the practice is just then to um to tell them more or less to to identify based on, we do have formulas that we use, they're just not. Based on, we do have formulas that we use. They're just not, they, they might not be hold as true today as they did.
So it might be not as simple. I shouldn't use, but straightforward.
Right.
As looking at that formula.
Right.
Formula.
Right, that's what I'm hoping.
Well, will our new accounting system make it easier for us to know what these, what costs we incur uh, on behalf of the different enterprise funds?
Yeah, it's not, it's not that. We, we know. It's just, it's a matter of assignment. So we do update them every year because they're, most of them are percentages of budgets that increase each year. So it's not like they haven't been growing at the rate that the budgets are growing. It's just the, the methodology behind it might not.
Right, right.
Go through it.
But it's, it's not that we don't have good data. It's, it's really the method.
That's great. We could do that in this budget. That's, that would be great.
Yeah.
The big ones, anyway. The, the enterprise funds and I don't even know what they are, but, yeah, that would be great. So did we decide to capture this and respond in a letter? And did we decide to capture this and respond in a letter?
I, I think we should send something simple back, like, you know, thank you for your letter. We agree. And we'll, you know.
You want me to take a shot?
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll take a shot. After I see the minutes. Are you, are you authorizing me to do, send it or do you want to see it, the letter or?
Are you going to include it on the user fees and enterprise fund?
Yeah, it's good.
Great, then send it.
I think you might feel, okay, I think you might feel better if you showed it to us, you know, what you said.
That's fine, so either way.
Better outside to you.
Oh, thank you. I'll see how I feel.
Okay.
And so will we?
Okay, great.
Okay.
Very good.
All right, so I think having um, can I say, having no curly business to come before this meeting, I would then a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn at eight thirty four.
The second, Linda Escobedo.
Hi.
Uh, Terry Ackerman.
Hi, Henry Deng.
Hi.
And my secretary, Herman.
My favorite motion.